Six oh four. Uh call this regular city council meeting of uh Tuesday, September the sixth, twenty twenty-two to work. Roll call please.
That's a member, Lorette, since here.
Here.
Uh mayor for town.
Here.
Um, that's a member for Jenny.
Present.
And some other friends present. Mayor lobby.
Here. Excellent, thank you. Oh, it's data instead of Henry. Okay, got it. Just checking.
I recovered.
At this time, I would ask for the approval of the agenda.
Uh, may I believe there's two executive sessions that we need to go into, and I think it'd be appropriate to do them after item six. Or vote on going into, sorry.
Well, I think they are scheduled after all the public hearings, which is item nine.
Oh, I see it, sorry.
Cristiano has has uh advised us that it will be two separate.
Yes.
Sure, it's good. Anything else on the agenda? Okay, uh then I would entertain a motion, please.
Lumina moves to preview agenda.
Three seconds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. All were in favor. Uh at this time, we have housekeeping matters. Uh anything anybody would like to discuss briefly before we get started? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you very much. At this time, we would entertain public comments about items not on the agenda. I would, I would uh advise that the the budget is actually a public here and 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 since it's on the agenda, we'll we'll take public comments at that time. Is there anybody else who'd like to make public comments on items not on the agenda? We'll start with Max and Tim. Oh, thank you.
Hi, Max, John. Uh I'm a fairly well-known community member in Ludbrook County. I'd like to address some council tonight in regards to the letter that was submitted by a city council person a couple of weeks ago in the last budget session, which appeared to accuse our city manager Lori of improper actions regarding her handling of the Hal Edwards case and its effect or negative effect on his ability to win the election. I was surprised, shocked, and caught off guard by that letter and the seriousness of it. It, as somebody who has followed this closely as a public citizen can of this issue, it was shocking to me mostly because even the public information in an accusation like that would have more merit going the opposite direction as to helping Hal Edwards hurting now. So it's surprising to me. Considering that I also just witnessed today the board of county commissioners center a newly elected official who reacted prior to the election that they didn't speak of. It is a pattern of behavior that is extremely concerning. It screams to me of what has become normalized in government where when we don't get the outcome we want, we make these accusations after the fact, the current change. Given that there is no public information available on this other than what happened in the public meeting, I would implore city council to seriously consider releasing public statements so that those of us that do pay attention can be aware of what is appears to be an extremely serious accusation and if true, a very serious concern for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Bo. Mr. Bur.
City council, I do have other comments on this, but it's the county manager. Uh first would be a county manager. My name is Tim Burman. I serve as the county manager for the county government. I just want to remind the city council, we've been a twenty-one year, my one-year anniversary was twelve fifteen. Lori's upcoming. Uh I just want to remind the council of things that all the progress we've been able to make in these past twelve months in terms of bringing two professional administrators onto your effective jurisdictions. Uh we received kudos from the state on the amount of work that we have done in terms of housing and the creation of the regional housing authority. I'm not taking any credit for anything, but I think that having two professionals administrating uh city government and council or city government and um county government have made tremendous progress in driving forward the priorities of both elected jurisdictions. Um and I do want to clarify for the previous public comment, um reason why city council or why the county government, sorry, um got to activate and centering uh the assessment Miguel Martinez was due to incidents that happened after the election um and abuse of staff. That is unacceptable. Um you know, recording is public. The documents are public. The censure is public. Um so just want to remind the council of what we've done in the past twelve months and how valuable it is um to be able to collaborate with the city in a form through Lori. Um we have, you know, last year at the community fund, State of the State, which thank you, mayor, for inviting me and for Lori as kind of the state of the state of our government is that we made a commitment to collaborate with each other and to drive forward the priorities of our electeds. And I believe we have them out. Uh my name is Tim Burman. Um I'm a citizen of Ludville. I live in Fort Worth, West Ford Street. Um this weekend, um unfortunately, I live on the the crossbeats of Fourth and Lyter. Uh someone came through Lyter, um later tonight, probably drunk, um and slammed into the car parked behind mine, which was a sixteen sixteen-year-old's uh first car. That car um slammed uh three, you know, skidded three feet into the back of my car. It was a bummer because the next morning the family called the PD, you know, wanted a PD to come out and to um, you know, assess the situation. No officers were available until noon when PD came on. Um so it's a bummer and the delay of that and also why I talked about living on Ford Street. I repeatedly asked Chief Edwards to have someone. Oh, that's my second.
If this is your second.
Yes. Um and I will rattle quickly. Um I repeatedly asked Chief Edwards, um you know, as I'm sure most of you know, or have you know who have gone to high school, um in Lake County, you go down Ford Street to get to the high school. You drive far too fast um and unsafe and um it's just frustrating that I've asked multiple times the chief Edwards to have someone there to whether to slow people down, to give a couple of kids tickets. But um you know, public safety is a huge issue and it's a bummer that it hasn't been addressed even to this point. One of the times that I asked, you know, Chief Edwards responded with like, well, what time of morning should it be? And feeling um the police department should have known that. Um it's not safe uh when I get ready in the morning and to go if I don't walk to work and take my car or I have to take my car. Um it is very unsafe. Um but my neighbor's dog has been hit by a student. Um my car door has almost been hit. Um it's not, it's not a lie or not trying to say that people are speeding on West Ford when they're trying to get to school. Um so just like uh to make note of that and for the city council to consider that when they consider public safety issues.
Thank you, Mr. Bur. Come on up. Please give us your name and address and y'all three minutes.
My name is Nick Steel. I live in Denver right now, working in Sullyborn, um Excel's area manager. Um so back in twenty nineteen, I helped a school manager, Lori, pass, working with now commissioner Jeff Fielder. Um former figure in twenty-one. Um now the area manager for Excel, from up here every week, uh working with the mayor and both Lories. So Lori tied in here earlier. Um who I'm sure would tell you this has been the best year that we've had working together, which has been issues in the past. But she said that to me. I'm sure she would say that to Lori. That's for sure. So I say all that to, you know, get y'all to understand I've admitted to Ludville, I'm up here all the time. I help it come to school measure. I love this town. Um I think it's one of the most, you know, unique and special places in the country. Um and it's my type of place in my territory. I serve for Excel, all of the map communities that we have. Um and that's why I'm here tonight. Really do love this town. I'm here to support Lori's time soon. Really hope you all continue at hers or as you're all's uh city manager. Um I work with more than a dozen city managers right now. In a previous life, I ran more than a hundred campaigns in the state. I've worked with, you know, hundreds of city staff over the years doing battle measures, candidate work, things of that nature. Lori's one of the most qualified, hardest-working city staff I've ever worked with in my entire career. Um and not only that, I mean, I think what separates the city staff is do they truly love the place that they live and work? And I can say that's definitely true for Lori. Every time I've talked to her about this town, what makes it special, why we're both working so hard to, you know, make sure that Ludville remains Ludville and going into the future and everything that is is coming your way. Uh there is nobody that I know uh more committed to that than Lori and more more qualified or able to work with you all as the council. I'm sure that happens. So um I like working for it, love working with the mayor, love working with all the city staff and county staff too. Tim knows how I've come up here. I really hope you all continue uh to work for it.
Thank you, Mr. Steel. I'm sorry, what? Uh Judge Floyd, you are up next.
Thank you, everyone. Um and I hope you can hear me okay. Um I I'm here tonight in my role as the presiding municipal judge for the city of Ludville, and I noticed that there were um executive sessions on on the agenda for um later this evening where you'll be considering certain matters related to the police department and city administration. Um you may recall last month I appeared before you to present my budget request for the court, and at that time I mentioned that we had substantially less tickets issued um uh this year than than in prior years. I actually went back and and did the look through all the budgets, and in fact, um there have been no traffic citations written into the municipal court since June of this year and only three for the entire year. Um the majority of criminal citations in the last six months have been for animal-related issues and during that time only one for another trespassing charge. So needless to say, in the span of a year, to only have essentially, well, less than a dozen overall cases written into municipal court is somewhat disconcerting. I've met with Chief Edwards several times over the year, um trying to get an idea as to if there were comments, questions, or concerns of his officers that were causing them not to write tickets since the municipal court. He always promised to to say that he would uh follow up with his officers. I offered to meet with them to discuss anything and and there was no response to that. Uh in September, I sent him a notice that there was a change in the prosecutor um that was going to be handling matters in the court as well as a resulting change in the docket day. Um and requested uh that we set up a meeting to meet with the chief and his officers and the new prosecutor to go over to make sure there weren't any comments, questions, or concerns because I in all honesty, there have been issues over the past year, especially with the the quality of the cases that were being brought into the court in terms of the reporting and the in the evidence that was being presented. Um I have not received any response to that request, and I stopped in several times to try to see if I could talk to somebody to see if it was on the calendar stuff. I I've not had any confirmation of that, and the folks I've ta-talked to so far weren't aware uh of the request. And I'm bringing this to your attention for what I see is the primary um goal of of law enforcement and justice in the city of Ludville. And I firmly believe that an engaged police force is needed to help ensure that Ludville's municipal code is properly enforced. And I I'm sorry to say, it just does not appear to me that the Ludville Police Department is fully engaged in that obligation. And as a result, that makes it very difficult for the Ludville Municipal Court to fulfill its role in protecting the quality of life in Ludville. You know, I mentioned at the the budget meeting that that the municipal courts are quality-of-life courts for for their local communities, and I take that responsibility very seriously. Um I, on the other hand, I'd like to also um say that my exchanges with city administrator Lori Simonson, they've always been very positive, very responsive. She's been very responsive to any requests for support or assistance um uh for the municipal court, especially as it relates to um maintaining a court clerk presence and support during this year, which is proved very difficult overall. Um but otherwise, I I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention for consideration. I I'm happy to meet with the police officers, the, you know, the chief, whomever it will take to try to get an understanding as to why it appears that the municipal ordinances are not being enforced currently. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Floyd. Uh Commissioner Burge, yes, please.
Good evening, everybody. I was online. Um I will try to stay to make some comments on the budget, but uh I just want to offer uh my comments to on uh acknowledging and empathizing with council um on these growing pains in trying to get a more professional um climate, uh working climate at the county or at the city, sorry. Um as you all have probably witnessed and realized, we've been through this um for the last six years at the county. Uh it's not easy. We've been through um folks and and I just want to emphasize uh an importance in really setting up your, the positions that you're creating and adding for success by um being sure that there's that support in HR um and other places. Uh if you can't hire that, I strongly encourage you um to to kind of take the route that we did at one point in in consulting and contracting certain aspects out for that. Um another another thing we had considered was um putting out a larger scope for con-con-con, sorry, consulting work um until we could get a a an atmosphere that would attract um a good candidate. So just just want to emphasize um really setting up, you know, these roles for success um and and understanding how hard that can be. Um also, you know, the council's strategic planning um a-a-in finances. I think it's just something, um again, sorry, I live at six thirteen East Seventh Street in City Limits. So as a city resident, I really would hope to see some um better organization of strategic planning for financing, um something, an example of that, which we'll bring up later perhaps, but um you know, in the last work session, council, you know, problem doubling the animal shelter uh budget without consultation from the of of equal funder as the county, but uh we got a request today from the housing trust um to fund a staff person for a city project, a U R A project. So it it just isn't, it doesn't quite add up and and it causes a lot of frustration um for me at least personally. Um and thirdly, if I have any time left, uh the hospital did come to us today, the Board of County Commissioners in our meeting, requesting uh a contribution of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars to make payroll. Um I don't think I have much time left to go go into that, but we will be meeting tomorrow at two o'clock uh with the St. Vincent's Health staff and their board to discuss the request for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burge.
It's great to say that my comments were on behalf of myself as a private citizen. I'm here to follow their supply. Private citizen comments.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Burge. Debails in the public who would like to speak, yes. Uh, please.
As an issue speaking as a private citizen, without it on my spurs, um I just wanted to say that I, as a private citizen, will support our city administrator, Lori Simonson, and I too am concerned um that friends and family that work for the hospital are not being paid, especially right now.
Thank you very much. Give us the public who'd like big comments and items on the agenda. Okay, great. Thank you all very much.
I think you have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have somebody up on Zoom? Oh, Caitlin, I'm sorry. Caitlin, please, go ahead.
Private citizen, I live at three oh three Highway three hundred out here in the county. Um I just wanted to verify that the mayor and city council got my letter of support for Lori that I emailed over earlier today.
Yes.
I did, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is, do you have any comments, Caitlin, or is that you just want to make sure we got the letter?
Yep, just wanted to make sure.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, you may have missed a panel. Okay, good, thank you. Uh at this time, we have presentations and discussions. Uh the first is a housing update. I think uh Fisher wanted to take the lead on that.
Sure, I'll take the lead for the first half. So um the regional housing authority has moved along quite well, um except for still waiting on DOLA to get back to us to formally apply to their grant process. Um we figured it would be by now, but we're kind of just still waiting. They haven't really sent any of those out yet. Uh the second is around a new program uh that we're collaborating with um on the, for a down payment assistant program. Um basically, it's a program that will help people get up to twenty-five thousand dollars for down payment assistant for anyone under eighty percent AMI. Um it will be zero interest rate. Anyone below a hundred percent AMI, it will be one percent interest rate, or anyone who knows loaning programs, that's ridiculously low, and it is for a down payment program um who will work with, uh what group was it again? Jackie?
It is the Impact Development Fund and they're a nonprofit community development financial institution and they're over this is um they're committed to developing and preserving affordable housing. And we found that applying for down payment assistance to be a tenant during it was not feasible for us in the middle of having pockets and it's time and it's impossible to go on the application for the cash assets. Um and we'll get a minimum fee soon by collaborating with them. So it's a very exciting thing for them.
It's also an administrative lift for us, something that we won't have to worry about as it'll live on their field and will save us lots of money. So we're excited about the opportunity to work with them and hopefully excited to finally get to apply.
I do have a question about that. Uh i-if somebody applies for, do they apply individually? Do they apply to you or do they apply directly?
It would apply directly.
Okay, if they do, does that change the numbers in terms of AMI um eligibility? It it probably doesn't because it's a loan, right?
It wouldn't. It would all, from what I understood, go our local numbers. I don't think it'd go to their county numbers if that's what you're asking.
No, no, no. I was asking, if you, let's say you have a three hundred thousand dollar house, just, you know, speculative league, and so the 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 and they have a down payment of twenty-five thousand dollars, it wouldn't reduce, it wouldn't reduce that to two seventy-five in order to get them to eighty percent AMI or like that. I guess that's what I'm.
No, it's just going to be considered a side of law, so it will help in order to down payment.
It'll help with the down payment, but wouldn't affect the total against AMI. Okay, just just curious about, I don't know, what, if you were to get the loan, they wouldn't impact anything other than just having a loan.
Uh one other thing I wanted to bring up was um other duties are very bad from DOLA that they are not being invited. One for the work that's done this past year has been kind of but we have, I think, moved a little bit, and the state has noticed. Uh I got an email from Andrew, actually, I don't know if I'm saying his name correctly, with Eastern P O H, and he has asked us to speak to uh Rio Grande County about our experience in creating the regional housing authorities. So I think we keep that. So again, it's another kind of way of thinking for all the work that everyone's done. And I appreciate the professionalism. I didn't stand out earlier. Um but I think that Lori and Jen bring to our community. Um I'm very appreciative of how well the roots have been. So anyway, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Jen. Anything else question? Okay, so the uh you got letters of of support and you sent those in, so where is that in the process now? You thought you were off the hook, I know.
So what's exciting about this is we can, uh you click our five-part rating with Impact Development Fund. They'll be able to get money maybe a lot faster than we've applied directly with D O H. Um we've applied directly with D O H. It might take up to a year. Um and again, because we don't know what our projects are, uh the man is going to look like, um it makes sense to go with them. At down the road, if you want to apply our own, we'll be able to do that. Um so there really was no downside to this for initial.
So as as products come online, then this impact fund would be available, that thought?
They already have funding, so they're just going to add to county.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jackie, but I believe this is a big program. It doesn't have to be just for affordable housing, right?
Well, so the AMI, so for this scale, it's 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 a hundred percent AMI or less. Um so those that are eighty percent would get zero percent interest for thirty years. Um they're ready to be entered rural until they sell rapidly. Um just very exciting.
Thank you, guys. Any other questions? Or Jackie says.
And just so council knows, a letter of support was from the council with mayor's signature and blessing. Or rather from the city, not from council.
I believe a copy of the letter was in the packet.
Yes, sure.
Um at this time, we have the high school business leadership class, Roxy and her students uh would like to make a presentation to city council. Welcome.
And with Justin and um Desmond and I. You're, you are doing a super stunning project for behalf of our community. And we have the outfit or to make it known. Um we thought about when it'd be nice to at least have it for the youth and the seniors in our community, so we can start to do this one, starting with the we also thought about um and I use those for teams or even families to at least go and give out or even for teams that have these for homework or that means um have more so to be able to get more.
I was doing the research for this project, and I don't know that the rest of the country. You know, with stress, anxiety, and as well as uh reduced drug use and crime rates. And 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 help with rehab with additions with some people. And the reason that it's so important to our community is because it's extremely dangerous going over two mountain passes and there's a high chance of avalanche dangers as well as it can take a long time and there can be traffic going to a water, like a swimming, a pool, or a bowling alley that can be like hours away or a couple minutes away. If we had it here, as well as we can have a hangout space where people can just interact with each other, talk with each other, have a coffee together, or just talk about things that they want to talk about without going going up and down the road here as well as is not being on the cold and the Ice Palace Park. And what else? what else? In that city, yeah.
What was your name?
Justin.
All right, thanks, Justin.
I'm pretty stuck up right now, so all you guys. Uh, I'm Zaden, I'm a freshman with high school. And there are too many ways that we've gathered data and the information that we're using here. From talking to people affiliated with the county and the county government as well as the board. He's working with the mayor, uh, Jeff Fiedler, Jane Harrelson, with KMB Swims, Paul Anderson, Jackie Wellerham, and the list was on. He also went through the school district, county and city master plans, the school report, NYCIS, the late county crisis center audit and more. He chose to gather information these ways because we are essentially going straight to the source. Thought people affiliated with the county and this government have the most credible and best information possible, has the best possible input. We went through all the documents and papers for background information to like put more into something, one of the people we spoke to proud of and help us find something we have questions about. We've been doing this all semester to develop enough information to bring here, hopefully made an impact, they know to see change our community. And.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to, I mean, sorry. Thank you for listening to us. Uh, we enjoyed coming here and presenting to all of you and um thank you for putting this on your agenda. Um, we would like to thank uh, some of the people that came to present to us. Brad Clavie, uh, Brandon Lembert, Hannah Gilmore, Felicia Federico, Karen Lewis, Margaret O'Perry, Amy Tate, Paul Anderson, Bane, no, Paul Anderson, Bane Anderson, Jeff Fiedler. And um, thank you for taking time on your day. And providing information for us. Um, we hope that you can keep the use of Lake County in mind. And uh, we hope that in the future we can get like a little hanging out session.
Okay, thank you very much.
So this is the after class, the department of nation, we presented to foundation of Chris Martin. Um, the town's meeting and we'll be presenting to um school board on Monday. Um, so we've kind of done our service burning project, we found a hole in the master plans and in our community. And we are hoping to move forward and making plans for our community to continue to divide as much as possible. Um, we talked about check the months, uh, we understand that it's going to take a lot of money to get everything we want, but we would like to move forward and continue these talks. We have already arranged uh meet regular meetings with uh building generations, full circle and get outdoors level. And we're hoping to continue to have new presence in our community government, governments, thank you.
Uh, just for those, Roxy, maybe you introduce yourself to to city council.
I'm John. This is Roxy Alba, I've been teaching on the high school here in Lethal, like from high school for five years. I teach uh business and technology and a teacher program.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to say, we've been getting presentations from kids for a long time, even before I was mayor. And it's my opinion, I think I said it to you, you guys, uh, when we met. I I really feel like as a community, maybe we've we've let the high school kids down. And I know there are no simple solutions, I don't have any great solutions right off the top of my head. Uh, but at some point, uh, we need to figure out how how to support the youth of this community, so. Any thoughts?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, this has been something that we've since I was in high school, which was five years ago, been thinking of us needing, so really happy that you all came out and actually presented on it when I was in high school, it was mostly just complaining about not having one, so the job on doing the work, it takes a lot of effort to do the research as you have, as well as doing a lot of the presenting, and it can be very nerve wracking, but you guys is great. Um, please keep on doing it because we definitely need it and uh, without it, I think we would be left out of a lot of conversations that are due, such as having an adequate rec uh rec center for our community, not just for young people, but as well for um the elderly.
Any other city council thoughts?
Thank you.
Dana or Tracy?
No, thank you for the presentations.
You guys are great, thank you very much. Uh, next up, we have our consent agenda, which is uh the approval of the November fifteenth minutes. So we had that updated, I have a look at those. And if so, are there any changes we need to make? Uh, seen and hearing none, I would give a motion please. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extension? Thank you, all were in favor. At this time, just a a quick update, I call it the gift day, it was today. I actually got on there Sunday evening, uh, it actually takes a a good uh bit of time. Um, uh, the organizations that the city gave to, we gave two hundred dollars to each of the organizations. Advocates of Lake County, Cloud City Conservation Center, Cloud City Wheelers, friends of Twin Lakes, Full Circle of Lake County, Kid Outdoors Lead Bill, Lake County Build a Generation, Lake County Community Fund, Leadville Irish Miners Memorial, Leadville Trail one hundred Legacy, Plan Pet Hood Leadville, Project Dream, and St. George Meals and Community Pantry. I did. Uh, and so this was uh the input of the city council and so thank you very much. I I know it's not, you know, any earth shattering donation for the organization, but it symbolically, I I feel good that it's a city council, we do that, thank you. Okay, next up. We have resolution number twenty nine, series of twenty twenty two, a resolution opting out of the paid family and medical leave insurance program. And you'll notice in that resolution, uh, if we do opt out, uh, that there's a space for the percentage uh that we are willing to donate. Um, and so we had this conversation, um. I can either entertain a motion, uh, with a second, and we can have discussion, or we can have discussion of whichever city council prefers.
Let's get the motion everywhere. Uh, and when it lands moves to Dr. Resolution number twenty nine, series of twenty twenty two, a resolution opting out of the family, um, pay family and medical leave insurance program, I further move to that the resolution be amended to reflect that the city will pay one hundred percent of the employees premiums for those employees who participate in the family program. Phil, sir.
Okay, time for discussion. Um, I don't know if we need to go around, we actually had uh an interesting conversation the other night, I think everybody kind of understands where they where they land, but uh for anybody who would like to comment on this, please do now.
Uh, I believe at any point in time we can opt in, is that correct?
Uh, yes, yes, that is correct, opting, yes.
Cool, and and that would set us in a three year block once we're leaving, regardless if we choose to regret the choice.
Correct.
Anybody else want to comment at this time? Dana or Tracy, any any thoughts before we take a vote?
No, I expressed them last week.
Okay, thank you. I think we all had, it was a big conversation. Okay, last call. Roll call please.
Yes.
Council member Graham?
Yes.
Council member for Genzi?
Yes.
Mayor Lovey?
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Green?
Yes.
And Senator Lomelam?
Yes.
And Senator Hill?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. That has been an interesting uh debate. Uh, and I appreciate it for these uh patients with uh finally getting uh reaching a conclusion that I think that will be good for our employees.
Yeah, thank you. I think that the feedback we got.
Yeah.
Do we have to report that in somewhere?
Yes, so the uh, the system is up for registering and we can register, I think we do not um have to do it until January, but we can certainly create a portal and log in and record it, and what we will provide is a copy of this resolution.
Okay, and that needs to be done before the end of the year.
Correct. Which is
Or probably as soon as possible.
We can certainly do it, that's why we wanted to make sure we got the vote and have this done in by council in time so that we could know what to report.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next up, we have uh ordinance number ten, uh, series of twenty twenty two, an ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on approval of certificates of appropriateness, applications for demolitions in the National Historic Landmark District, and this is second reading, so we'll go through a a public hearing. Um, and so at this time, uh, because this is second and final read of the ordinance, city council will follow these steps for the city staff to give any presentation that's necessary, next I'll invite the public to comment on this ordinance of second reading, and finally council will discuss and vote on the ordinance. Uh, is there anything that staff would like to present relative to this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, and you know, we have, we have discussed it, so um.
I think the only thing we wanted to point out is there are no changes on second reading.
That is, thank you, that is true. Um, okay, this time, I would like to ask if there's any public comment on this ordinance at second reading, either in favor of or in opposition to the ordinance. Anybody in council chambers? Seeing none, anybody on Zoom who would like to speak to city council on this ordinance? Okay, we'll see none, I then would entertain a motion to close the public input portion of the public hearing.
Against you moving to close the public input session and public hearing.
Thank you.
Phil said.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thanks. At this time, the public comment is closed, um, so now it is time for city council discussion and vote. Any discussion that anybody would like to entertain? If not, there is a a motion in your packet. I would entertain a motion please.
Moving then moves to Dr. Ordinance number ten, series of twenty twenty two, an ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on approval of certificate of appropriateness, applications for demolitions in the National Historic Landmark District on second read.
For Genzi seconds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
And Senator Lomelam?
Yes.
And Senator Graham?
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Green?
Yes.
Yeah.
And Senator Hill?
Yeah.
And Senator Morrison?
Yes.
And Mayor Lovey?
Yes. Thank you all very much. Uh, this public hearing will be closed at uh six forty nine P M. Uh, next up, we have another public hearing, but this is budgets are always public hearings, so we're going to go into the public hearing for uh our annual budget. Um, so I'm now going to open the public hearing on uh the city's level proposed adoption of ordinance of what is upset. Uh, this is resolution number forty, series of twenty twenty two, a resolution appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies for the city of Leadville, Lake County, Colorado for the fiscal year, beginning the first day of January twenty twenty three and ending the last day of December twenty twenty three. Uh, at this time, I would ask for any staff input on this budget.
Well, I think we want to uh let Donna speak to the surplus.
Yes, the, the two different versions that were sent out um for the packet, one had a surplus of eighty two thousand something along those lines, and the only difference is that I moved that surplus into the contingency line item, so that we can possibly use those funds in two thousand twenty three.
And what will be used those funds for?
Well, we had discussed to um for the employee health program. Um, that would be a consideration to that.
You mean the wellness?
The, yeah, I think it was the
Wellness, yes.
Healthy wellness.
Yeah.
The proposed idea that Councilmember for Genzi came up with, the mayor had run some preliminary numbers and it was well within that number. So we had a debate over wellness program versus potentially paving, uh. So we thought it would be best to put it in contingency and then we can decide at whatever point we want to decide if it goes to, you know, y'all can decide wellness versus paving or both.
We still putting two hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
Yeah.
There is a, there is a line on the page.
Yes, we just didn't, the surplus of the discussion was rather than putting it in something that it was committed to that line on, and you could put it contingency and then decide at a later point. But my understanding was in the surplus, you can submit a surplus budget to the Department of Legislative Affairs. It's just that you don't have that money budgeted, so if you want to spend it, you have to go back later and do a supplemental, which is why it made more sense for us to not submit a budget. Like for us, it's great, like ooh surplus, that's great, but strategically, it's better for us to put it somewhere in our budget so that we don't have to do a supplemental later if we decide we want to spend it. If that makes sense, and that was something Donna told me, hmm, probably like ten times. But it, you know, being this first time through the budget process, I think it was a good move to move that money.
Okay, in your conversation with the staff, what what is going to be needed before we could bring a proposal for the the wellness program to city council?
Uh, well, I think we have to figure out the 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 constants, I would like to find out what the parent, what other cities do on their parameters of of what it can be spent on, and we have lots of choices. Um, you know, some places do a a gym, straight up gym membership, that probably doesn't make sense for our community. Um, but it may make sense for um funds that can be used towards different types of wellness, whether it's, you know, some, some uh companies and businesses do it towards um regular health screenings, um incentive towards getting your physical incentive towards getting um your blood, you know, checked every so often, and so we have lots of options, I think. First, we need to get a human resources director. Well, I mean, it would be really, it would be really helpful to have somebody be able to put the legwork into that.
Any questions for staff regarding the budget at this, this point, we'll have time to discuss it later also.
Um, I think Christiana and well, Commissioner Much has her hand up, but I think Christiana was going to address one point as well.
Okay, um, we're going to go into public comment here in a minute. Christiana, please go first.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, yeah, I think so.
Okay. Uh, let me know if that changes. Um, I understand that there is a question or might be a question regarding the amount that the city can appropriate for its fire department. the amount that the city can appropriate for its fire department. Um, and in, and this is in light of sharing costs with the county and, um, the county's, you know, proportion of costs and decision on that currently, um, under the IGA with the city for, um, for the fire department and fire services. Um, and I want to make sure that city council knows that council has the ultimate discretion to, uh, appropriate the amount of funds that it deems appropriate. Um, so if there is an amount that is, for example, above, um, a proposed number or, um, or, or something like that, then, um, you know, that is okay to appropriate in your budget process. Uh, the concern, especially in relation to the IJ and, you know, jointly funding the fire department would mostly be on if the city were to, uh, not appropriate enough funds according to the proposed, uh, budget or, um, under, you know, any other terms of the IGA, then we would need to have a, a, a different discussion, but, um, Mayor, can I ask, is the amount appropriated um, for the fire department more than last year's budget this year?
Yes, it is.
Okay, um, yeah, so, so something like that is okay. Um, and that's under the city council's discretion. You can approve that amount this year. Um, the, like I said, it's if we weren't appropriating as, as much in the budget, um, or not funding according to the enough under the IGA terms that where we would have a problem and we would need to have a conversation about that. Um, I, I'm happy to answer questions about that if they come up or city council has them now. Um, but that is my comment, that city council has that discretion.
Thank you. Any questions for Christian on that? I, I would say to Christian's point, uh, first of all, the, the budget's about eight percent more than, than the previous year. Um, I would also say, I, I think it needs to be understood that regardless of our appropriation, we cannot tie our appropriation, uh, to, to the county in terms of the IGA does that. However, um, their appropriation is not our uh, venue, so.
Right, we can't, we can't commit county funds, nor would we ever have the authority to commit county funds. And so what I asked Christiana to be prepared to answer is can you all pass the budget in front of you this evening? And her answer is yes, you can, even though there's a question about the, you know, the county's contribution and the IGA and your play between hitting an impasse. Um, her, her, yeah, short answer is yes, we, you all can pass the budget this evening and then we can as the year progresses and as we have discussions, what we have scheduled with the county, um, figure out how that works going forward.
Mayor question.
Uh, was it Dana? Dana, yes, please.
Yeah, I just, I guess I have a question about how that works if we continue with our appropriation and the county is at an impasse and holds to last year's appropriation. Um, what happens to the fire department? And their expenditures?
Well, so I, I think the answer to that is, is that you are committing city funds up to the amount within the budget. And so the fire department would have to be aware that, that they, the city has committed those funds and we would work in good faith to, and we are going to, to, you know, work with the county about the, the joint funding of the fire department. But the fire department would have to understand that, you know, until the county passes their budget, uh, those funds are not necessarily budgeted either. So once the, you know, the county passes their budget, budget, the city passes their budget, we can figure out, but I'm hopeful that is, is Christian explained that, that we can work on negotiations, um, throughout the year. The city can do a supplemental budget. Um, I know, know if this was brought up, but the, the, the difference between um, what the impasse dollar amount is within the budget, uh, that would, you know, limit the, the funding and what the actual request is, is fifty-four thousand dollars?
Roughly, yes.
Roughly fifty, the, the, the delta is about fifty-four thousand dollars.
I'm gonna ask a clarifying question about the impasse. The impasse from the county doesn't say they're not funding it. It just means they would only fund at last year's or the current year's budget.
Last year plus five point five percent. And, and I'll just, I'll just this, this is, and this is what's difficult about you know, the IGA we've identified, um, is not as up to date as we would like. And it's one of the things that's on our list to, to negotiate. But the, the problem is the IGI specifies the process that we've never followed. So it's, it's a little, you know, essentially what's supposed to happen is there's a, supposed to be a, a program board, I believe it's called, that recommends a budget to the joint fire management boards. The joint fire management board is one, uh, county council member, the mayor and an at-large member. So those three peoples are supposed to get a recommended budget. They're supposed to hash out the budget terms. And then under the IGA, that budget is recommended to the county commission and the city council. And the IGA is very heavy-handed. It says that the county commission and the city council shall pass that budget. So the hashing out in some sense, which we never, we've never done, um, i- is, is a lot at the joint fire management board level. But you know, it, it, it hasn't been that way in the past. And so I think going forward, I think that if we're going to stick with that IGA, that's the way the process should work. So, you know, I mean, I, 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 Tim and I are, are new and, uh, we're, we're, we're working through this budget process for the first time. And I think we are, you heard, are committed to working together on this. Um, I, I, I think we're, we're confident we can figure it out.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions to city council? We can go to public comment.
Mayor, I just have a question.
Yes, please.
After we go to public comment, when we come back to the budget.
Oh, yes, yes. Plenty of time for discussion, uh, when we, we, we get to a motion at some point. All right, this time I would like to ask if there's any public comment on the budget. Um, and I'll ask first in the room. Mr. Bergen.
Um, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Just wanted to let, um, you all know about, uh, proceedings that happened today at a board accounting commission regular meeting. They saying bits and hospital district board of directors and senior leadership came to the board accounting commissioner for this pattern for, um, them requesting four hundred and eighty thousand dollars of the county of additional tax funding to go to San Vincent Hospital District because they cannot make payroll, uh, in the month of December. Um, where county commissioners will hold a special meeting tomorrow at 2 PM to discuss the request and decide on it. Um, but I just want you to think about that and you work through your budget process. Obviously, no one who thinks of, uh, come this evening to request anything of city council, um, but there are, there is concern with the other, other, other elected, uh, board of directors in this community um, and their failure to manage the assets of their institution.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment, uh, on the, uh, fire department budget? As proposed.
Well, I think it's just the entire budget.
Yeah, that is true. It's the entire budget.
I mean, we're not limiting. If you've got questions or comments about any of the budget, we're not.
Is there anybody on Zoom, uh, who would like to speak to the council on this budget? If so, uh, probably just unmute and let us know. Uh, Commissioner March, yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to make a comment. I, I couldn't quite tell what those numbers were, uh, regarding salaries as they're lumped into the one, um, one line item really, so, um, um, kind of note and ask, uh, council uh, either for clarification or just verification of um, kind of the discussion we had had together at the last work session. Um, and also, you know, a number of your other items, I, I couldn't quite tell um, if those were reflected in the, in what was sent out with the packet, but we will have our extended discussion tomorrow. Thank you.
Just to confirm, you said that, um, basically there was a bit of confusion following along with some of the line items and the budgets towards people specifically because it was all in one line item. Is that correct?
Yeah, a lot of our conversation with you all at our work session was regarding kind of the increases in salaries and the approach of a, of a, and, and I could not tell how those were reflected in the budget that went out with the council's packet. They weren't divided up, so I, I don't, yeah, I, I don't know what those numbers are to comment more specifically.
And, and so I would just say that, that the council directed or had consensus on certain changes that were at the last work session and staff, meaning Donna, has captured those. And if the council feels like those are incorrectly captured, those changes or anything that's been consensus reached upon at the last work session, please let us know.
It, it's fine to stay and having been through this budget process pretty closely, uh, that those changes were, uh, were lowered uh, for some people, the fire department reflect only four percent plus two point seven five percent. Uh, so four percent total and two point, which is the same that we've done for everybody in the city. And, and if I'm not mistaken, is reflective of the county's approach as well. So those numbers should, should be in line with everybody else. Yes, Dana.
Thank you. Yeah, I think maybe what Commissioner Mudge is referring to, um, or her question could be answered with the salary breakdown sheets that we get from Donna and maybe we could, because that looks like one line item on our budget, but then we receive separate sheets with the individual salary breakdown. And perhaps that would be helpful to her.
Good.
Okay, we, we'll get that out this evening. I think Councilor for Gentry had his hand up.
I want to check the, the most. Does this sound okay to you, Commissioner March?
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, the question of the final wages. Looks like we may have over, overcorrected. Because in the current wages that it is released at the way that it's that it doesn't work on my computer here, but my computer home shows that everybody is at zero point six seven five point zero seven five, six point seven seven five percent increase that two point seven five is for merit. Except for the finance director in the city manager, which just only chose it at four percent. So I'm curious why we overcorrected for the finance director and for
That was a mistake on my part, yes, in a rush, but the mayor did catch it. So the second verse or the latest version has that increase in there. And I can send you the updated wage report if you'd like to see that.
That's fine, as long as it
Yeah, it did. It did get corrected.
Everybody is fair and accurate, we'll probably support.
And, and the only other thing we, we caught, we didn't want to hit you with another version, um, but the contingency will say economic development. Right now, it just has the word development in it, but we know, we're clear that you all made it for economic that dollar map. The description was for economic development and contingency. Does that make sense?
And that's an updated as well?
It, it will be on the updated. We just caught that today.
What do you mean? Like there, there's more that we can use to see for.
No, no, the, the, the contingency has a description on the right-hand side. So right now it says development, but it should say economic development because you all wanted it for general economic development, not earmarked to the EDC. Do you remember that? That was, so it's just a correctional wording in the description. Do you, do you know?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to find the line item.
Yeah, no, it's, uh,
Sixty-nine oh five. It's zero one forty-six sixty-nine oh five. Zero one forty-six. Sixty-nine oh five.
While you're reviewing that, I would like to continue with any possible public comment. I don't think we've really finished that yet. Um, anybody else on Zoom, uh, who would like to comment, uh, on the budget? Okay, up here, we can finish up with that, uh, conversation.
Have you found it nice?
You know, I just can't.
It's on page twenty-seven.
Of the packet.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven or forty-eighty. Where's the bottom?
Page twenty-seven.
Would you rather see this minutes?
I'm very very special time.
Would you rather see this?
No, it's okay. I can, I can, I can learn and all that.
Four zero six.
Four zero six, yes. Five, there we go.
So if you scroll all the way to the right, you see there's a description.
At the moment, development. Yeah.
And then you also see that Donna added at the end of that paragraph that we added the money that was the surplus to balance the budget.
In my rough calculation said, depending on how much we decide the amount is, and then we also have to decide who's eligible. Uh, but it would be under forty thousand dollars.
For a wellness program.
Yes, absolutely. That's what I'm going to say.
Clear, clarifying, Donna, the one sixty-one eight thirty-seven includes the seventy-four eight thirty-seven? Yes, okay, thank you.
And Dana will be, will be pleased to see there's thirty thousand dollars in additional. Just, just so you can start your calculations early.
Bring it, I'm ready.
Mayor, you have a couple other questions.
Please.
Uh, in general, are we there on this budget conversation? Are we?
Um, well, let me close the public in proportion, if you don't mind. Uh, again, last call for any public input on this budget. Seeing none, I would have today a motion to close the public input portion of the public hearing.
Moving on, that moves to close the public in, in the portion of the public hearing. Well, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Thank you. This public proportion is closed at this time. Now we have questions and comments from city council.
Okay. Johnson, my guy in here, no copy and border, amazing. Uh, a question for you is I know that we are not going to fund EDC and there could be that amount in the future. Uh, I do see that we are going to fund Main Street program. However, I was seeing zeros or am I missing?
Yes, that was when Main Street, we, we've gone, uh, from when Main Street was part of the city and it had its own line on a budget. So, so when it became part of the EDC, Donna didn't use those line items anymore and made it a different line item because it was not a city department anymore. Potentially going to come back, but I will let Donna explain that that was when Main Street was part of the next line of city. So it's now, Main Street is now sixty thousand dollars and this is Donna's passion, be able to give us the line item off the top of her head, right?
Not me, so that I'm like
Zero one four zero six.
Is it what, what page is that on?
Twenty-seven of our package.
And oh, there it is. It's normal place. Okay.
It had that place before when it was living in the city. Does that make sense? And so those, Donna keeps those line items sometimes, even if they're not used for historical perspective.
But cabling. I'm just going through my list. I, I'm obviously spreadsheet Brianus.
So cabling with it's, it, it would be in the description on the right-hand side for building maintenance for city hall. So if you look under city hall expenditures and scroll down to business maintenance, which I can't.
Page twenty-six, item zero one four zero six, six two one six.
Christian, man.
Uh, you type Ctrl F and you type the words that have been said.
Smart, you know, the search function.
Yeah. Where's?
Uh, so yes, the cabling will be in that.
I did find the, uh, the, some funding for our survey.
Oh, you did?
Yes, it was in, it was in the plan. For thirteen thousand.
Oh, yes.
Well, there was already, um, four thousand in there. That just increased it. I, I mean, I put it in the not necessarily separate from survey, but in that line or what you talked about.
And professional services. Any questions? Uh, Data, Tracy, any, any questions on the budget?
Um, guess.
Okay, uh, in which case I would entertain a motion, please.
Move and that moves to a top resolution number forty.
Yes.
Um, series twenty twenty two, a resolution appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amounts and for the proposed is as set forth below. For the city of Leadville, Lake County, Colorado, for the fiscal year, uh, beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty three and ending on the last day of December twenty twenty three.
Is there any other discussion? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Another one.
Yes.
Councilor McGrath?
Yes.
Councilor Frigenti?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Green?
Yes.
Mayor Lavi?
Yes. Okay, this time. Did we miss anybody?
Yeah. Oh. Councilmember Hill and Luna Laal did the motion in the second.
I think we saw.
Yes. You're just in branch. Okay, thank you. Uh, at this time it is seven seventeen. This public hearing is paused. Okay, next up we have, um, eighty. Thank you all for being here.
Thanks, Jen.
I want to watch you do in your spare time.
See you again.
Okay, this is resolution number forty one, series of twenty twenty two, a resolution certifying and levying the mill levy of the city of Leadville for twenty twenty two to deprive the cost of government for city of Leadville for the twenty twenty three budget year. Donna?
Um, yes, so it's just a mill levy that the city has in place. We can always decrease it if we want to. Um, and the only reason we can increase it is if the county has abated any taxes, which they only did fifteen hundred dollars in their report. So I just kept the mill levy at eighteen point nine, which is kind of the standard of what we normally do. So basically, that's basically saying that that's telling them how much to, um, assess their value to come up with what property tax will be assessed to each property.
Pretty perfunctory. Thank you. Uh, any questions, uh, for staff on the declaration of the mill levy to Lake County? Hearing none, I would indicate a motion, please.
Councilmember Frigenti moves to through resolution number forty one, series of twenty twenty two, resolution certifying and levying the mill levy of city of Leadville for twenty twenty two to deprive the government and city of Leadville for twenty twenty three budget year.
Thank you.
You have seconds.
Is there any other discussion? Wait. Oh, I forgot we had snacks. Oh, my goodness. Uh, well, uh, we'll, we'll take a quick break here in this minute. Uh, I've kind of all forgotten all about the snacks. Um, okay. At this time, we have a, a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Me? I thought you said green. Yes.
That's member Frigenti?
Yeah.
Councilmember Nerison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Laal?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Green?
Yes.
Mayor Lavi?
Yes. Thank you, thank you. Uh, it's only seven twenty, but we have executive sessions coming up. I'm going to take about a five-minute break. There are some snacks over there. Thank you.
Just get the party started. And thank you Hannah for getting the snacks, these are great. We don't want to be as handy. I'm looking at you. Dana Tracy, are you enjoying the snacks? I just want to make sure.
They're delicious.
It's not the last of them.
That we had when Max was there? Okay, it is seven twenty-eight. And at this time, we have an executive session. And so I'm going to go, I'm going to go through the, the talkback first. And then I'll ask if anybody who would like to make the motion to set up data to pick on. The next item is an executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions on, on matters related to the police department. The executive session participants will leave the public meeting following passage of a motion to go into executive session. And then the public meeting, both in person and remote, will remain open for the public to enter and leave as desired while the executive session is being counted. The executive session participants will complete the executive session and then will re-enter the public meeting to proceed with the remainder of tonight's agenda. Are there any questions for city council about the executive session process before motion is brought forward? See, who would like to make a motion to go into executive session?
I can if you have a script. Grant moves to go into executive section, session under section twenty-four dash six dash four zero two four B of the Colorado revised statutes for legal advice on specific legal questions concerning matters related to the police department. I further move to reconvene in the December sixth city council meeting at the conclusion of the executive session in order to proceed with the remaining items on the agenda.
Thank you, we have a second. At this time, is there any other discussion?
We're missing naming the participants.
Oh, that comes. Yes, okay, thank you. But it's, it's, it's actually a good point, it's a little confusing to me too. You know, but nonetheless, that's, that's where we are in terms of the script, so thank you for bringing that up. Nonetheless, I'm sorry, we did hear a second. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Gervin.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Habe.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Seven were in favor, so we will go into execution session. At this time, we're going to go upstairs to the top of truth. And
[S01] [222.33]
Everybody stayed.
Sure.
Pretty amazing.
That's pretty amazing.
Yeah. They are asleep, you just can't.
I'm still awake.
Uh, the time is now nine oh seven P M and the executive session has concluded. The participants in the executive session were Mayor Greg Lavi, Councilmember Tracy Laritzen, Councilmember Tim Hill, Mayor Pro Tim Data Green, Councilmember Max Borgency, Councilmember Christian Lulial, Councilmember Shannon Grant, and also City Administrator Lori Simonson, City Attorney Christian McCormick, and uh, Council for the City through Sursa Courtney Kramer and Deputy City Clerk Anna Sheer. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none pursuant to the motion passed prior to the executive session, we now reconvene the December sixth regular meeting at six oh, uh, I'm sorry, nine oh eight P M.
It should be six one.
Huh?
Wish it was six oh eight.
Close enough. Uh, at this time, we have a motion to go into executive session um, uh, to discuss personnel matters and legal advice related to the city administrator. Um. I'm just gonna say I, I think it's inappropriate for us to go into this executive session. It's, I think it's for the wrong reasons and besides, I think there are other ways to deal with with uh, employee matters uh, than going to it into executive session. So I'm just gonna leave it at that. Um.
Have a question.
Yes, please.
Is there any employee agreement of the city administrator?
Yes, that was.
Is there a, uh, isn't there a review process?
There is a review process and and her her data tire was uh, February fourteenth. And I'm going to use uh, this in, I went to the Colorado Municipal League Meeting. Uh, it's been about six weeks ago and they, one of the presentations they gave was a review process for city administrators and city managers. And that's the process that I intend to implement, which will include uh, uh, city council and department managers as part of a review process for the city administrator. So that's the, that, to me, that should be the process that we follow, but thank you for asking that.
I have another question.
Yes, please.
If we do, if the motion succeeds, is the city administrator invited to the executive?
Well, that, that's where it gets very complicated. The administrator has the right to to ask that this be held in, held in an open session, not in an executive session. Um, and Christiana, could you advise us on that, please?
So that's in the discretion of city council. Um, if there's no request to hold the discussion in open session and the motion for the executive session succeeds and passes, um, then it's in the discretion of city council whether to invite the employee who is the subject of the executive session to the executive session or not.
Okay, so thank you.
Do we have, do we vote on that or how's that?
Well, the first thing is we would, we would have a motion. If somebody wants to make a motion to go into executive session, that would be the first step. Is that correct, Christiana?
Um, you can. So what I would do is decide who would be invited to the executive session if the motion passes first. Um, I, that. That's what I would do, you guys first, uh, or have you guys do first, and then we have to um, ask of the city administrator whether she wants the discussion to be held in open session or not. And depending on her answer, we may or may not be able to even move to go into executive session, right? Because depending on her answer, we may or may not be able to hold that session um, or have the discussion in public. So that's the order I would suggest. I would suggest determining as a group who you want to invite into the executive session for this matter. Then we talk to the city administrator about, um, you know, if she is going to request the discussion to be in public. Um, and we can go from there.
I, I appreciate your advice. It feels backwards to me, but.
Well, if you pass the motion to go into an executive session without first talking to the city administrator about whether she, you know, request the discussion in public, then you may be making a motion to im- improperly. Um, so that's why we at least have to talk to Lori first to get her input on that. Um.
All right, a motion is not the same as a vote, but so what's uh, the first thing is that we, we determine who is going to be invited into this executive session. Um, so we have seven city council members and we have uh, City Attorney Christiana uh, McCormick. Uh, we would have the deputy city clerk Anna Sheer. And the question would be, if we go into executive session, would city administrator Simonson uh, be in that executive session?
And Mayor, one, no. One quick note, I, I wouldn't recommend um, having the deputy city clerk in the personnel matters executive session. I think we need to have somebody else working the computer for that. Um, I just.
Somebody else that can, you know, that, that doesn't make any sense.
If she can set up the computer, uh, it's just, I don't think it's appropriate to have um, somebody else in that.
Or I would also agree.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, I, I'm, I'm just gonna say, I don't, just for everybody, I mean, I was actually surprised today some of the uh, public comments with folks, I mean, saying that of their support for the city, city administrator. I don't think that's in question here. I think that there might be, the reason why, at least for, you know, like, I'm not, I'm not thinking that we're gonna go to a uh, uh, this executive session to talk about like, what would the word be like? Employment matters. I think it's more about trying to get on the same page. Uh, I think there's some concerns that folks have that they wanna be addressed and and talk openly, transparently about that. I mean, I don't, that's what I think it's about. I don't think it's about like, we don't, you know, we don't support, we support the C and then I support Smith's administrative. I can speak myself. I just think that there's no, any sort of team environment that I think we need to have those hard discussions. I mean, it's been here for, and it's, it's those uh, difficult conversations that I think some folks wanna have, and that's why I think it's on the agenda.
Okay, that's, that's, thank you.
Does anyone feel strongly that Lori shouldn't be there? For here.
I don't think we can talk, it's freely of Lori's there, bring them.
Um, then I think that's, that the contradicts the whole idea of going to executive session to to, to seek legal advice as opposed to a, a, an H R matter. Now, that's my opinion. Uh, what's uh, first of all, at this point, let's ask uh, city administrator Simonson, if i- if we um, have, would you object to an, an executive session? Would you rather have it in an open section?
Uh, well, okay, so thank you for asking the question. I wanna thank the council for letting me think about the answer to this. I can't, I wanna thank you for your fairness. Um, I, obviously you saw I was blindsided by that coming up the last time. And so I appreciate you had given me opportunity to talk about it. I'm gonna tell you, Councilmember Pedent, I have no idea what this is about. Um, I have still not been told what this is about. Um, it's my understanding, um, which was echoed tonight, that there is a letter, um, which I have not seen a copy of, um, written by council member who's also chair of the Lake County Democratic Party. And it's my understanding that this letter expressed its criticism about how I've handled an internal personnel matter, um, and that I failed to sufficiently protect um, uh, the reputation of a particular candidate in a recent election. Um, I've never been contacted by this council member. I've never been provided with a copy of the letter. I am gonna tell you, I still don't know what this is about. Uh, so I can only surmise that this is politically rooted. Uh, as a city administrator, I am not supposed to be involved in partisan politics. Um, everything I've done to date regarding this internal personnel matter has been with the advice and consent of council. It's not my job to protect the reputation of a political candidate. It's my responsibility to protect the re- the reputation in the, the city. So my answer to your question is, I have no issue with anything that I have done. I'm proud of my work and I'm glad to hear that people are happy with my work as a city administrator. Um, I have no issues about um, this internal personnel matter and how I've handled it. Um, but I do think that the discussion about it involves another person. And I think a candid discussion about this issue would involve private matters regarding another employee. And so I don't think it's fair to have that discussion in open out of respect for that person. Um, and not because I want to have anything discussed behind closed doors about me. So with that, I would say I would request out of the respect for someone else's privacy, that the discussion be happened in the executive session.
Your, thank you.
Name and answer handle.
Sure enough, Dana, yes, please.
Uh, this is partially a, a question for Christiana, but um, I just, I just wanna clarify that we don't necessarily have to have an executive session that involves legal advice to make it an executive session. That council does not really have any uh, power or um, input in personnel matters except for the city administrator. It was the sole appointed person that council has some um, H R uh, duties toward. Is that, is that correct? So could we hold an executive session to discuss a personnel matter uh, regarding that position?
Uh, yeah, city council can hold an executive session um, regarding the, you know, employees that they have direct, um, you know, control over or supervision over or um, so on and so forth. Um, so that, those positions include, um, you know, positions like uh, the city administrator and the city attorney. Um, and so those positions are appropriate for executive sessions with the city council um, on personnel matters related to those positions. Um, and to address your other part of, the other part of your question, um, no, you do not have to have uh, legal advice as part of the executive session. Um, that it was my recommendation for this one to include that as part of the executive session.
Thank you very much.
I have another question. Could there be two parts of it, one with legal advice, one without, where we record in the executive session, or would it all be?
This one would not all be legal advice. Um, and so to the extent that the executive session is about the personnel matters specifically and not about the legal advice, um, then there are executive sessions like this where part of it is um, recorded and part of it is not recorded, um, because it is legal advice. So that would be the case likely here.
Gotcha, thanks. Okay.
Um, any other questions for Christiana or about the process in general? Okay, I would ask, is there anybody who wants to make a motion to go into executive session?
I will make the motion, but I don't have the proper wording in front of me.
Um, then repeat after me. Uh, I moved to go into executive session.
I moved to go into executive session.
You're section twenty four dash six dash four oh two.
Hold on, I gotta write that down. Section.
Twenty four dash six dash four oh two, four F, and twenty four dash six dash four oh two, four B.
Okay, under section twenty four dash six dash four oh two dash four F and under section twenty four dash six dash four oh two dash four B.
The Colo- Colorado revised statutes.
E R Os.
For the purpose of discussing.
The purpose of discussing.
Personnel matters.
Personnel matters.
And legal advice.
And legal advice.
On specific legal questions.
On specific legal questions.
Concerning the city administrator.
Concerning the city administrator.
But we have a motion. Does anybody wanna second that motion? We have a motion in a second. Um, I still feel like this is wholly inappropriate. That's, that's my opinion. Uh, especially since, um, as was pointed out by um, Councilmember Hill, that uh, there is a process. Um, a review process for this administratively, and uh, this just doesn't feel right to me. So I'll leave it at that. Any other discussion?
Mayor, I, I mean, I, I know that we have a review process for the city administrator. I, I'm just, once again, my when I'm by a government, we have quarterly check-ins with our performance, right? And I think that there's been some, some thoughts, some people have some, some, we have some kind of conversations perhaps to have, right? I'm not fully figuring out. I'd like to hear it. And so I think about this as like a check-in, a quarterly check-in to make sure we're all firing on the same side. So in that light, I feel that I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of this, just to have this.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, also, I think it's to Max's point earlier, really important to have these conversations of understanding like, do we all agree that this should be um, or how positions going and a check-in for ourselves in a way that given that there is obviously some personnel issues, um, where we just kinda have to have an executive session. I would necessarily think that there is a strong will, as Matt said, to fire, but more so a checking completely of go over what has happened. Where are we at with it? Does it make sense? This direction makes sense of these pertaining to these personnel issues and then what legal advice we may need um, based on discussion that we have had, um, checking in with what has happened and what issues we have heard. I, I don't necessarily think that means anything more than just discussing the personnel issues and, I mean, no one really wants their personnel issues discussed in public, nor is it fair to them to discuss this. Appreciate your being willing to uh, go into executive session, but that, at least that's where I also am coming from. Not necessarily a, let's completely undermine the review system. Um, just a check-in of like, the hell's going on?
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Tracy, Dana? Anybody else? Okay, we'll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
No.
Yes.
Councilmember Pedent?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
I'm sorry, did you say green or grant? Right, are you, I'm sorry, are you talking to me? I can barely hear you. Yes. Sorry.
No.
Yes.
All right, Councilmember Laritzen?
Yes.
Okay, five to two, that is an affirmative vote to go into executive session. Uh, we're gonna now go through the process. So bear with me.
You guys were about to go upstairs. Go ahead.
Christiana, are you still there? Can you hear us?
Yes.
You know, uh, city administrator Simonson asked, was she invited? And I, I don't know that we decided that, um, oh.
Okay, then, then let's make a clear decision on that.
Okay, um, I, I would, I would, yeah, I don't know if we need to go to an official vote or not, but uh, I would uh, agree that she should be invited if she wants to be. Max?
Agreed.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Christian? Um, Tracy?
Um, I'd prefer not to, but I don't have any problem with her being there.
Uh, Dana?
Yes, I think it would be quite reasonable to have her present.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
At this time, the time is ten eighteen P M and the executive session has concluded. The participants in the executive session were Mayor Greg Lobby, Councilmember Tracy Laritzen, Councilmember Tim Hill, Mayor Pro Tim Dana Green, Councilmember Max Furchency, Councilmember Christian Lina De Al, Councilmember Shannon Grant, City Attorney Christian McFormic, and City Administrator Lori Simonson. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session violation of the open's meeting law, I ask that you make your concerns for the record. Okay, seeing none pursuant to the motion passed prior to the executive session, we now reconvene the December sixth regular meeting at ten nineteen P M. Okay, at this time, we have the public meetings plan or anything anybody would like to add?
I think it looks great.
Thank you. Good, good decision.
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm sorry.
Forgot. Sorry, forgot the Lura meeting on December twenty second.
Oh God, thank you very much. Lura meeting, it's very important we have to pass the Lura budget. There are only two action items on there. It's going to take us ten minutes, so I'd appreciate anybody who can get on, get on and get off.
Sorry, I have a pet trip in my case.
Oh, I thought it was a pedicure.
Will be.
All right. Thank, thank you, Tracy. Good, very good point. Anybody else with public meetings planner? Okay, mayor's report? Don't think so. Council reports?
No.
Any council reports, Tracy or Dana?
Yeah, I'd like to have an extended discussion about why I can't make the city holiday party.
Can, can you mute her, please?
No, I'm good.
Thank you, Dana. That was good. It is ten twenty in the city councils adjourn. Thank you all very much.
Good, good.